The regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held January 19th, 2013, 6:00 PM at the Public Safety Building to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky is absent. Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Council, Vice Mayor Pfeifer?
Here.
And Mayor Jones is absent.
Okay. Number three on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Steve Troutman is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is a brief summary of current events by Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, had a very nice high school rodeo championship this weekend. We probably had about fifteen hundred people in attendance, which is about five hundred more than last year. It was quite an event. I went out there for a little bit, and there was a lot of people out there, a lot of people staying overnight, because it was an event that went both Saturday and Sunday. I just want to advise the public that the new Dog Park parking area is complete on the north side of the Dog Park. The gate has been moved over there, and we will be closing and locking the old gate beginning next Monday. Just want to give people an opportunity to get used to the new location. And then I'm pleased to report that the old gardener house in one of the outbuildings was torn down last week, and so that is now gone. Asbestos remediated and removed. So, that's it. Madam Vice Mayor.
Council? Okay. We'll move on to number five, which is introduction of new employees. Mark German, Public Works Maintenance Technician, Steve Troutman, Fire Inspector, and Nick Garcia, firefighter. Who's doing these? Who's doing Public Works Maintenance? Mr. Luter, is that you?
I don't know where anybody else is sitting up here. I'm Mark German. If I was on vacation, I'd be in my office.
Okay, that's you. Come on up.
Yes. You're so close. I apologize. I knew, signed off in his bathroom before I went on vacation, but this is the first time I've met him. Mark is actually came to us from the Vetplex program. Worked with them for a while, interviewed with us, interviewed very well. Let him introduce himself.
Mark German, originally from Camp Verde. I am tickled to be working with the city right now. I'm loving every minute of it. Guys I'm working with are great, and hope to be here for a long time.
Well, you've been working without Mr. Luter here, so we'll see what happens.
See what the next little bit holds for me, huh?
Welcome to Cottonwood.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Chief.
Vice Mayor, Council, it's my honor tonight to introduce two of our newest full-time Fire Department employees. First, Nick Garcia, who was born in Oklahoma City, raised in West Palm Beach, ended up going to NAU. Before that, he was a fire explorer in high school, and that kind of got him hooked on the fire service. He went to NAU, majoring in exercise science. During that time, his family moved to Cornville, so he spent a lot of time in the Cornville, Verde Valley area. Ended up going to EMT School, enjoyed that so much, he went on to firefighter one and two certification. He became a volunteer for us here at the Fire Department in Cottonwood, also was reserve over in Camp Verde Fire District, and also worked for the ambulance company, and just completed his paramedic program right before he came to work for us. He was a certified paramedic and just started with us the end of January as our newest firefighter. You want to say anything, Nick?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens of this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this other young man, Steve Troutman, he was born in Staten Island, New York, raised there, went to high school there, went in the Marine Corps, and spent twelve years active duty Marine Corps as a military policeman, an accident investigator. He also then worked ten years as a paramedic for the New York City EMS system, and he was a first responder to the towers on 9/11. Moved to the Verde Valley in 2007. He and his wife own a dog grooming company here in Cottonwood, and he worked full-time for Clarkdale Fire for four years, and was also with the ambulance company. And he came to us, and he's our new fire inspector, has a great deal of background in fire investigation, is where he's really done a lot of work in that, plus his military investigator experience is bringing a great deal of investigation experience to us, as well as a lot of firefighting experience and EMS experience. Again, probably saw a lot, so much in those ten years in New York, as far as about all you could ever see in the EMS trade you'd see in New York City. So, brings a great deal of experience to us, and we're just a pleasure to have it.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, when I first moved out to Cottonwood, I fell in love with this place, and I'm very proud that I now work for the city and the Fire Department, and I just want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to serve the city and the citizens in the city. And I'd like to thank the Fire Department for taking their chance on me.
Welcome to Cottonwood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, according to ARS 38-431.02AH. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Anyone? I've got one here that filled out a call to the public on Elaine Brown.
Hi.
And would you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, hi. My name is Elaine Brown, and I live in the Village of Oak Creek. Do you need my physical address? No, that's good. Okay. I'm here as a neighbor, a concerned neighbor, and I want to talk to you about cell tower placement and smart meters. I've been, not arguing, I'm opposing cell tower placement near residential since October in Yavapai County. I've been sending out some great ordinances to other cities that are having the densification, as they call it, of towers, and they're placing them in our area now. Now, the rest of the country is inundated with it, we are not, but they're going to place them now, and there are six or seven that have just gone on in the last two months. So, we did have two withdrawn from Yavapai County, at Sedona Pines and at Verde Village, fifty, sixty feet from the residential home. These things are 4G, and they're pulsed microwave radiation, so they're not like anything that's existing. They're go-ahead, and they're upgrading the ones that are already there. It doesn't mean they should be any closer to the people, in fact, they should be further, your setbacks. They're asking for waivers of setbacks and fall zones. Now, there's a few things going on. Smart meters are coming to our area as well. Those go onto your home, and they replace the meter that's been there for a hundred years, and they pulse microwave radiation into your house. They use your electrical system as a cell tower, and they take readings all day, and they collect data. The reason why the cell towers are now coming to this area so fast is because they're going to be taking that data, and they're going to be taking the data off the smart meters, which I just found out like two days ago. So, things change every day, and you have to keep up with the information. Smart meters are detrimental to your health, but unlike the cell tower, you can talk about health and environment. If you just opt out on your own, it doesn't protect you. The meter on the house shoots out twelve hundred feet, so it will connect with all the other houses in your city. Then when they pulse out and they do the readings, and they're very intermittent, you could be walking down the street in your neighborhood, and you're going to get spiked with somebody's meter. Now, these things are disrupting computers, but they're also, they could take someone's pacemaker if they're walking by and they're spiked at that time, and maybe turn it back to factory settings. So, you can see where there's all kinds of issues here, and they're not letting the public know they're coming. They are coming to Cottonwood in December. They'll be in Cornville and Camp Verde in December, and they're going to do our neighborhood in Sedona and the Village of Oak Creek in January. Now, I had my first meeting last night with about twenty-five neighbors, very bright, intelligent people. They were very happy to have the information when they left, but very distressed, and rightfully so, because there's a lot of things we're not being told. And for the first time in our lives, I would say, we always knew that whatever happened to us, or whatever came near us, was always very safe. It was tested. You know, I like my electricity, but I'm not willing to give up my life for it, and I don't want my neighbors getting sick either. So, there are a lot of things you can do. Cities can opt out, okay? And they are doing that. The UK just came and spoke about their whole, the whole government is now not making it mandatory because of what's going on. In America, utility companies are being hit with multimillion-dollar class action suits, and you won't be exempt from those either. But eight Florida counties have passed resolutions for opt-out, the whole county. Twenty-four units of local government in Michigan, resolutions and moratoriums. Fifty-seven cities in California. Fifty-nine municipalities in British Columbia. In California, eleven cities have made it illegal. In two cities, there's an ordinance making it criminal. So, there's, you know, there's enough going on that people, even if your community doesn't know about it and they're not coming to you, you have a responsibility to do something about this. I know you have a good relationship with APS, but it doesn't mean that you should have to pay with it with your citizens' health. And the placement of the cell towers as well, that's a little bit more difficult because you can't talk about environment or health, but you have a lot of power that you don't know about. You can tell them where they're going to place it, and they tend to go into lower income areas, schools, VFWs, you know? It's just not right what they're doing, and they really don't, I don't feel like they're caring about my safety. So, I will do everything that I can to delay their placement, wherever it is, and I will also work with my community, and anybody that wants any information, please, you have my email. I will be happy to find the information for you. If I don't have it, I'll do whatever I can to help, but I think that we need to do something in the whole valley. I'm not just-
Would you like to say your email for the television?
Oh, okay. My email is E, M as in Mary, B as in boy, at Juno dot com, J-U-N-O. Please send me an email, and I'll do whatever I can to help. But you really, as a city, with the stroke of a pen, you could, Arizona Corporation Commission is being forced APS to come up with an opt-out. It might take a couple of years, but if everybody doesn't, if you don't hold on to your analog meters, some companies are destroying them, so that you have to stay with the meter that runs, you know, that also runs on electricity. They're not UL-approved, and they're causing fires in some states. So, there's health, fire, privacy, and security. They cannot, oh, the government just made the wireless companies immune to lawsuits because of breaches in surveillance, okay? And they're the ones that are going to be collecting the data. Hackers, they can't guarantee won't go in and find out when you're not home, because it pulses, it'll know when you turn on equipment, when you take showers, when you're not home. But it'll also, maybe a hacker will want to come in when one person is home, or maybe somebody will want to turn up your water meter at ten degrees. So, I mean, there's just too many things to just let it come in, and if you don't do a citywide, nobody's going to be, really be safe. Okay?
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you very much for letting me come in, all right?
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Seeing then, we'll close the floor to the public. Number seven, approval of minutes. Special meeting of January 15th, 2013, special meeting of February 12th, 2013, and work session of February 12th, 2013. Council?
I approve the minutes.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Norman and seconded by Councilmember Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes pass. Unfinished business. Ordinance number 592, amending the municipal code by deleting Title VI animals in its entirety, adding a new Title VI animals, and amending section 1.12.010 of the municipal code, and this is the second reading. Who is, is this?
I can talk about it, because we really did discuss this. I know Autumn did an awful lot of work along with, oh, Al, I can't say, I think, Autumn Durns, and she seems to have deleted the things we were concerned about, and I spent a lot of time reading this, I don't know why, must not have a life, and added the things that we are concerned about. So, I think it's complete. I think we got exactly what we had charged her with doing, and I think it's a good ordinance.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Anybody in the audience have any comments on the new ordinance, or the revised ordinance, actually? Okay, do I hear motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 592.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Mr. Pratt, seconded by Ms. Norman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing one, ordinance number 592 is passed. A City Clerk, if you please read ordinance number 592 by title only.
Ordinance number 592, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the municipal code by deleting Title VI animals in its entirety, adding a new Title VI animals, and amending section 1.12.010 of the municipal code.
Okay. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on any of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the agenda, consent agenda, and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. First is extension of hauling services agreement with Waste Management Incorporated for the Cottonwood Waste Transfer Station, and second is liquor license application for Christopher L. Dobrowski, boy, I butchered that, I'm sure, applicant for the new Schoolhouse Restaurant located at 202 North Main Street. And we have, number one is going to be tabled, because, we'll bring it back on later, the one with Waste Management. And anybody else want to pull any of these? The other one? No? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve item number two on the consent agenda.
Second? I'll second that. It was moved by Councilmember Pratt, seconded by Karen Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes with the tabling of number one with Waste Management. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Resolution number 2681, appointing an administrative hearing officer. George?
Madam Vice Mayor, City Council, this is due to the appointment of the city's administrative hearing officer. As you may know, the officer presides over the review of zoning enforcement in the City of Cottonwood, specifically with regard to those matters that are out of compliance and need to be further reviewed at the hearing level. This is an appointment to a two-year term. Hearing officer duties include review of civil code violations and complaints generally filed by the city staff in response to perceived code violations. The officers, excuse me, the officer stages public hearings and has the ability to review the citations, levy fines for the infractions, or rescind the complaints in response to compliance. There are two applications for the position at this time, one from the existing hearing officer, Lynda Hobson, and the other from an applicant whose name is Edward Walker.
Okay. Are both applicants here?
Lynda Hobson.
Would you like to come up to the podium and tell us why you want to do this again?
Hi. My name's Lynda Hobson. I am currently the administrative officer, administrative hearing officer for the City of Cottonwood. I do want to address you as Vice Mayor, other council members, and do want to let you know that since 2007, when the council did start this program, we started as a fledgling-type organization, and throughout the years, we have come better and better at what we do. There have been different personnel that I have worked with, and different city employees that I have worked with. Right now, we work procedurally as a team. In that team, I do have George Gaylord, and Officer Combs, Officer Ponce, Officer Durness, and Leslie Wager. We try to streamline this procedure. I think that it has gotten better over the years, it's more efficient, and we do see that people are in more compliance, which is what we wanted. Initially, when I was called by Brian Mickelson, him talking about that this is what the council wanted to do, the whole idea was compliance, it is not punitive. We feel that we have a wonderful city here, that we have the beauty, not only of the surrounding area, but internally, we have the potential to be the best city. And of course, I think it's the best city, that's why I've lived here for thirty-four years. We just want people to come into compliance. If they are resistant, if they do not respond to our code enforcement officers, then they do have to come to a hearing. What I heard from City Manager Bartosz is that quite often, I don't even see some of the people that have been notified of a need for an abatement, that they realize that, yes, I want to come into code, and I don't want to go see this hearing officer. I dress really ugly on those days, guys. But nonetheless, we're seeing more compliance earlier. Those people that were resistant have kind of decided that they want to contribute to the City of Cottonwood also. They live here, we all live here, we want to make it a better place, and want to comply with what the council did determine in 2007. Without all these people working with me, I'm sure that I would not be able to do it by myself. So, I do want to comment to the community development people that really do work. As I come in as hearing officer, all the information about these certain cases are given to me as a cold call, because I am to know nothing, so I remain neutral. And so, these people prepare for me a better understanding of how we can go forward with the hearing. I talked with Terrence Pratt this morning at Safeway, and he said, if you, he says, if you want to do it again, think about what you're doing, basically. But I do want to continue doing this. I think it's getting to be a better program, we're getting more compliance, the citizens of Cottonwood are saying, these people are really wanting to go forward. They're not just resisting, they're not making a mockery out of this process. And so, I really would like to go forward with what we're doing. It is getting better, and we hope that we can continue. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Council?
I've got a comment. Just, everything I've heard about this whole process, and the compliance and the way the board has worked together is positive.
Very good.
And, you know, I do think we have two really well-qualified people, but we have somebody who knows the history and the experience, and I commend her for stepping up to the plight once again.
Thank you very much. Mr. Howdige?
Yeah, I do believe that Mrs. Hobson has the qualifications and the experience for this position. The old saying, if they ain't broke, you don't have to fix it. I think that's something you brought up one time. And so, with that, I'd like to make the motion, if I may, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve resolution number 2681, appointing Lynda Hobson as administrative hearing officer for a two-year term ending February 20th, 2015.
Second.
It was moved by Councilmember Howdige and seconded by Councilmember Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Resolution 2681 passes. City Clerk, would you please read resolution number 2681, inserting the name of Lynda Hobson, please?
Resolution number 2681, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Lynda Hobson an administrative hearing officer for the city. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for offering again, Lynda. Thank you all. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Resolution number 2682, 2683, and 2684, appointing members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Gaylord.
Once again, Madam Vice Mayor and Council, this pertains to three appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission that are currently available. The seats are presently held by Vice Chair Diane Lovett, Commissioners Jean Wilder and Robert Williams. They've all expressed a desire to be reappointed. There are no other applicants at this time.
Okay. Council?
I can kind of repeat what I said about Ms. Hobson, is I've heard good things about these folks, they're doing a good job for us, they're willing to step up again, and all three candidates are eminently qualified, know the history of the city, and I don't see why, I think this is a no-brainer.
Okay. Anyone else? Have any, anybody from the audience have anything to say? And how many of our applicants are here? All three. Would you like to come and address the council, please?
Just very briefly, Vice Chairman, my name's Bob Williams, and it's been a real pleasure to serve on the zoning commission this last three years, and I look forward to doing it again. Been working with the 2025 general plan, on the advisory committee with that, and we're making some good progress and looking forward to proceeding with that and culminating, bringing that to you here in a few months. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Diane?
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Diane Lovett. I've served on the planning and zoning for the city for over five years. It's a privilege to do this, because I think that Cottonwood needs to look forward with good planning to be a good, as good as we are now, and keep it as good as we are. So, it's not going to be easy, but we have to be aware and look forward to it. So, privileged for me to serve, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jean?
Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I really feel proud to be able to serve. I've lived here in the community now six years, and it's been very rewarding to work, watch city folks work. We all seem to be pretty much in accord, and I think that what we all want is a community that is thriving. It's been fun to see what's happened over the just six short years that I've been here. Old Town is a bustle. I'm down there every day for an afternoon coffee, and it's fun to see people coming from other communities and really liking what they see as well. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for your service. Okay, we have three positions and three applicants. Do I hear a motion?
Can I make all three motions, though?
Sure.
I move- I move to approve Resolution Number 2682, appointing Diane Lovett to the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing her term of office. I move to approve Resolution Number 2683, appointing Jean Wilder to the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing her term of office. And I move to approve Resolution Number 2684, appointing Robert Williams to the Planning and Zoning Commission and establishing his term of office.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Pratt, seconded by Councilmember Dowling. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. City Clerk, would you please read Resolution Number 2682, 2683, and 2684, inserting Diane Lovett, Jean Wilder, and Bob Williams?
Resolution Number 2682, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Diane Lovett, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office. Resolution Number 2683, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Jean Wilder, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office. Resolution Number 2684, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Robert Williams, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing his term of office. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Number three, elimination of water connection fee implemented as part of the purchase agreement for the Cottonwood Water Works Company. Mr. Luter.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, as a requirement of the 2006 purchase of the Cottonwood Water Works system, the city contractually agreed to pay $1,500 growth premium to the former owners of Cottonwood Water Works for each revenue-producing connection that was hooked up to the city's water system. These were basically a pass-through cost to the former owners. That agreement is now sunset, and staff has discussed it with finance, and because this basically was a pass-through cost, we're recommending that council abolish this fee at this time.
I agree.
We weren't collecting that money anyhow. We were collecting it and handing it off to somebody else, so.
Passing out like we're losing anything. Correct.
When we were in the process of purchasing this water company, this was one of the things that really stuck in my craw, and I think Vice Mayor was with me here. But in order to get this deal done, and on recommendations of our negotiators, we went ahead and went with it. This caused a lot of concern with our community, with our community members. I'm very happy to see this sunset. Actually, in a lot of ways, I've said in the past that the water company was the best, worst deal that we ever made because I think the water company is paying off for the city, and it's working out for our community members. So like I say, I'm happy to see this, and if there's no more discussion, I would like to make.
I think there's someone in the audience that wants to speak.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I don't have a pen to fill out the.
We'll fix you up with.
Thank you. I'm Daryl Smith, Cottonwood, Arizona. A question on, actually, it's kind of two questions here. I don't know whether you can answer them or not. If, since that has sunsetted, now if, let's say, a citizen applied back in September, October, November, and they paid the $1,500 fee, and it's sunset, they're not hooked up, will they get that fee back since they're not hooked up? I realize you probably, that's probably a question for the city attorney there. And the other question is, will the city, because the city never got that money in the first place. It was a pass-through. Will the city bring that back as revenue for themselves? That was the other question, and I know that will take discussion, too, there. But that was just the two questions I had there. I thought it was quite interesting because I was approached by two people, as a matter of fact, that had applied prior to this. They had paid $1,500 upfront, still hadn't been connected. Will they get it back? That was, that was the only question I had. And I say, that's probably, Mr. Horton would probably have to answer that.
I would have to answer that, Madam Vice Mayor. Mr. Smith may be confusing the impact fee and the connection fee. The connection fee is not paid until such time as the water service is turned on. The impact fee is paid at the time you pull your building permit. So anybody from this point, should council approve this tonight, anybody who requests that their meter be installed and the water connection turned on, will not pay the fee. The second one, of course, is somewhat rhetorical because we can't look to the future and see what future councils will do with fees. But staff feels strongly that this is one that really wasn't fair to charge as it was a pass-through fee before.
Does that answer your questions, Mr. Smith?
Yes, yes, thank you. I didn't really expect a real clear answer right now or anything like that. It was a question I wanted to ask simply because I was told that the $1,500 had been paid at anticipation, but I mean, that's what I was told, and that's why I was curious.
Well, have them check with Dan's office.
Yeah, please.
Anything else from council? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, I move to eliminate the $1,500 water connection fee currently charged to new water connections.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Hodeki, seconded by Ms. Norman. Any more discussion? Anybody in the, any more in the audience? Seeing none, do I hear? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay.
Vice Mayor, if I could, one more point of clarification just popped into my mind. This growth premium did not sunset until January 24th of this year. So it's within the last couple of weeks that it actually sunset.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Number four is a change order, number one, for Jackson Kinsey Construction Constructors for installation of new windsock pole at Cottonwood Airport as part of the airport beacon and windsock replacement project.
The council previously approved the beacon and windsock project, and it was as we were meeting with the contractor, looking at the new windsock installation, that we came to the realization that the existing foundation and pole may not be sufficient for this bigger lighted sock. So we actually had crews expose the sides of it, have the engineering staff look at it to determine that it might work, but we don't want to do might works at the airport. So we worked with the contractor and received a cost of $4,794.71 for the new foundation and pole. And to give the council and our residents an idea, even at the $24,397.24 that this change order would put the total project, it's still significantly lower than the next lowest bid, which was $34,100. So staff is recommending council approve the change order.
Any questions?
Sounds to me like this is a safety issue, isn't it?
It is.
Anybody in the audience have any questions?
I'll jump in because I haven't had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Luter about this. The one consideration, and he might be able to address the council with it, is under the FAA grant, if we were to seek FAA contribution for the funding, we would need their approval for the increased cost ahead of time, and I don't know if that was discussed and considered.
No, it wasn't. It, as I said, it was as the contractor was actually on site.
So do we still have to do that, then? We have to give.
Well, if you want the project to go up now, then you can approve it tonight. If you want to send staff back to have the conversation with the FAA about the FAA paying, I think, is it 90%?
Right.
Of the cost of the project, then that would be direction to staff to bring this back after, and I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to talk with Morgan about that, too. We exchanged some emails. He was going to check with Dan. Dan just got back from out of town. So we usually have these discussions before we get here.
And the fact that Mr. Scott isn't here means he's got a baby boy?
Not yet, as far as I know.
Oh, okay. All right, so do we need, do you want to bring it back to the staff, or?
My experience with the FAA is this would probably delay the project by several months.
Exactly. That was my feeling there, and I think we should move forward with this.
Mr. Scott did indicate that we do have some savings in the existing budget from some other maintenance items that fund this, so it wouldn't put us over budget. This particular grant, I think we've been working on for 18 to 24 months. So to take it back to them, while I appreciate the counselor's idea, in reality, FAA takes quite a while because first we have to go through ADAT and ATACOL, and then they have to go through the FAA, so.
Yeah, we need to get it safe now. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the change order, number one, with Jackson Kinsey Constructors for the amount of $4,794.71 for installation of a new windsock pole.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Norman, seconded by Councilmember Pratt. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, change order number one for Jackson Kinsey's passed. Number five, ordinance number 594, amending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land totaling approximately 105 acres in size, Quail Canyon subdivisions, Unit 1 and 2, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of R-I-L-70 residential slash single family to PAD, Planned Area Development. First reading.
Madam Vice Mayor and council, this pertains to the Quail Canyon subdivision that is located just south of Quail Springs Ranch Road, somewhat west of the State Trust Block, also Old 79. The subdivision was annexed by the city of Cottonwood in 2011. We have yet to establish city zoning on the property. The current zoning is R1L-70 under Yavapai County. The proposal would be to rezone to planned area development. And the reason for the planned area development designation proposal has to do with the fact that we've got a series of parcels out there. They're encumbered by wash corridors and rendered less usable than they would have been otherwise. There was a, in the plating that was conducted by Yavapai County several years ago, it was, that was an issue that came up, but there was never any action to try to dedicate any kind of open area to accommodate the wash corridor. Subsequently, they were divided by property boundaries, and what we have is a series of parcels that, with building envelopes that are crowded by the corridors. So we're proposing the establishment of a site plan through the planned area development, the adoption of planned area development zoning that would adjust those building envelopes to basically move them away from the wash corridors and make the sites more usable. As part of that action, and this was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on January the 28th, the commission recommended approval of the zoning change subject to the stipulations outlined under ordinance 594, also an observance of a, an exception as allowed under Section 424(b)(15), relieving the requirement to submit a master development plan on the basis that the subdivision is already platted and fully developed, was accepted by the city as part of the annexation, which occurred in 2011, and in the interest of promoting the integrity of the existing wash corridors. Second, that the residential sites be developed in conformance with the letter of intent dated December 28th of 2012, and the associated site plan, excuse me, and that disclosure statements be recorded for the adjacent lots acknowledging the adjusted setbacks in the building envelopes. Madam Mayor, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Council, have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments that they want to make on this? Sounds pretty clear. Okay, it's first reading. So City Clerk, would you please read ordinance number, we don't have, no, we don't do anything here. Ordinance number 594.
Ordinance number 594, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, for a parcel of land totaling approximately 105 acres in size, Quail Canyon subdivisions, Units 1 and 2, so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of R1L-70 residential single family to PAD, Planned Area Development. Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay. Number six, it's a special event liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, for three business mixers scheduled for March 21st, 2013, at 301 West 89A, April 18th, 2013, at 1750 East Villa Drive, Suite A, and May 16th, 2013, at 747 North Main Street. And Lynda Norman's going to take this because I have a conflict to reach myself.
And so do I.
And we've lost our quorum.
I started to say, do we, we don't have a quorum.
That's what I thought.
So we'll have to table it.
Well, I work for the chamber. He's just on the board. Does that make a difference?
You know, I think it's up to you individually whether to declare a conflict. I think as between you, I think with the vice mayor, a paid employee of the chamber is one of them is going to.
So since I'm on the board, I.
Unless, what's the first date of this?
March 21st.
The next one is March 21, and when is the next council meeting?
March 21.
The question would be is whether liquor control would have sufficient time to process this.
They state they'd like three weeks, but I've had people, I know people have taken them in like a week before, and I think they've gotten them approved, so. I think it just depends on how busy the state board is at the time when they're reviewing these.
So I think that's up to Mr. Pratt.
What's that?
I think that's up to you as to whether or not you want to declare a conflict or sit in on this one.
I don't want to make a violation of the law.
No, I don't think you have, I don't think you have a statutory conflict.
Okay.
Lana, do you have any comments about this? Nope. Okay. Just asking. Do I hear a motion?
I will move to recommend approval of the special event liquor license application submitted by Lana Tolleson, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, for chamber mixers scheduled for March 21st, 2013, April 18th, 2013, and May 16th, 2013.
Second. I'll second it. Motion was made by Mr. Dowling, and Lynda Norman seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Thank you.
Sorry, these short legs can't move as fast as they used to. Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution that we are going to table. It's on supporting the Arizona House Bill 2238 and the creation of regional water augmentation authorities. They were still in session. Nothing has been decided, and Tom Whitmer got back with us to tell us that it's, so we're going to definitely table. Number seven, claims and adjustments.
I must declare a conflict. Step down.
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
It's been moved to pay the claims and adjustments. Any comments from anybody? Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, we pay the claims. We write our checks and pay our bills. Okay, number seven pursuant to ARS 28431.03A7, council may vote to go into executive session for discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its representatives regarding negotiations for the purchase, sale, or release of real car property. You want to move the?
I'll move that we go into executive session.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Dowling, seconded by Ms. Norman. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we're in executive session.